Shirley leaving?
Please go in the bathroom.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion?
So, move. Back to regular session. We're coming back into regular session.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Uh, sure. Is that that way she'll be back in a minute. You won. We need to wait on her to get back.
Yeah.
Alyssa? Is the streaming working?
It is working. Okay, was it not working earlier because this may be?
Well, we can't turn it off.
Okay. We're good, okay. All right, thank you.
Save thirty minutes of blank space there. Oh. Was she entertaining everybody while we were gone? I'll be darned. I wish you would have been there.
She'll tell you again. She'll tell you again, you ain't gotta worry about it.
Ready?
Percy, we'd like to start back if you're ready.
We are in session.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the count. May I start now? Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before we move back into the meat of the session here, I want to make just address a couple of points that have been raised during the past several days to me and I think probably to some of you with regard to the status of the city manager situation and the action that took place subsequent to the executive session that took place at our regular meeting last Tuesday. I've had a number of questions of people, from people saying, when did the council vote to put Mr. Milliron on administrative leave? Let me just explain what the nature that did transpire. At the executive session last week, the issue of the employment of the city manager was discussed, and I came back out here and said no action was taken. That was a true statement, no action was taken with regard to the city manager at that time. Subsequent to that executive session, however, at which his employment status was discussed, I represented to the council that I would talk with the city manager and discuss the situation and determine what would be an appropriate path for us to follow forward in the matter. That was as opposed to coming back out last Tuesday night and having the council vote on that issue without having any discussion with the city manager and without really even having raised the issue in the public eye at all. Subsequent to that executive session, I did go and talk with Mr. Milliron along with the mayor, and we did discuss the, his employment situation and sought to determine how we should proceed with the discussion of his employment status. I did talk with Mr. Milliron to attempt to work out an agreement that both he would feel comfortable with along with the city. Nobody has approved that agreement, although Mr. Milliron has looked at it. And in the course of that discussion, we did essentially agree on a course of action that we would take. And he understood, I believe, that he would not be coming into the office on Monday morning. And for that reason, that's why it was styled as being administrative leave. That was not an action of the council. That was an action that, I don't want to mischaracterize it by saying that he volunteered for, because that wouldn't be correct. But in my discussions with him along with the mayor, we determined that that was the appropriate action to take while the council has the opportunity to make the decision as to whether or not his employment is going to be continued or not. So I wanted to clear up that point first of all, that there was no vote or action by the council to put him on administrative leave. That was initially came from my meeting and the mayor's meeting with Mr. Milliron and our discussions directly with him. Second point that I think is important, that there's been, there's some misinformation out there, and that is as it relates to our city charter. I've seen a number of people quote the section, the sections in the city charter which provide that there is a grounds for removal and a procedure for removal of the city manager in sections 3.23 and 3.24 of the city charter. And those two sections deal with removal for cause. There is another section in the charter which I haven't seen in any of the news stories that I've read that is section 3.20 of the charter. And that particular section says that the manager shall serve at the pleasure of the council. So there is a conflict in our charter, that's one of the points that I'd made before is that that really needs to be cleared up because you've got two conflicting provisions in the city charter on that issue. Now, we do have a, an employment contract with the existing city manager that very clearly did say that the city manager could be terminated at any time for any reason, making it very clear that it was an at-will contract. And that contract was signed by both the city and by Mr. Milliron. So there is a provision that the city manager can be dismissed for cause. I don't think that's what we're talking about here today. There's not, never been any statement that I'm aware of that there is a, any type of consideration of his dismissal for cause. So I wanted to clear out those two points beforehand. I'll turn it back over to you for action.
Thank you, David. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we terminate the employment of the city manager.
Second.
Have a motion to second to terminate the employment of the city manager, David Milliron. Discussion? Call the question, all in favor? All against? Four one.
All right, Mr. Mayor, the next item that I think needs to at least be brought up and considered and discussed by the council, pursuant to the contract, you do have the right, I believe, to terminate the contract. There is a built-in severance package in the, in the employment contract with Mr. Milliron. That, that comes into play no matter what. I represented that he and I have had discussions about how to resolve the situation in the best interest of both him and the city since he is not being terminated for cause. There is, there's no allegation that Mr. Milliron has taken any of the acts that would deserve being terminated for cause whatsoever. So we have, I have prepared a settlement and severance agreement that Mr. Milliron has seen, and I would ask that the council consider approval of that agreement to tender to Mr. Milliron for him to sign. And if so, it will help govern the times of payment that the city will make. The requirement is that the city will make payment to Mr. Milliron for a period of six months of his salary, along with his benefits that he was entitled to during that period of time. And this settlement and severance agreement puts into writing that the city will honor its commitment to him in that regard.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the severance and settlement severance agreement, Mr. Milliron.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to second, discussion? Not, all in favor? All opposed? Four one.
Mayor, make a statement, please.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Well, I think I will vote to do it simply so that he can get what Mr. Mecklen has put in there. So that, that way I will vote for him to get that severance package. So you can say five zero. Yes, I'm changing it. So that it would show that, in order for him to get what we have, what they, what Mr. Mecklen has put on, that, so that he can get it, I will vote for it. But that's the only reason.
You're, you're voting against the termination but in favor of him getting the severance package, which, which, which is not an inconsistent vote at all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I think we agreed, are we gonna discuss item two on the agenda, or?
I think it's appropriate for you to give some formal direction as to who is going to be managing the city at this point.
Okay. I had asked and spoken to council just to, you know, individually to see how they felt about putting someone in charge on an interim basis. I think it's important, obviously, you know, the city has to continue to run day-to-day operations, and so I had asked Chief Mansour to do that, and I would like to ask that the council consider that, that we continue that until such time as we find an interim city manager to, to come in and fulfill that obligation. I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second.
Have a motion to second, all in, well, let's discuss, discuss.
If you agree to.
We're not gonna give them that voice next one.
Does that mean he has to move down to City Hall?
That was, that was a big part of it.
We said he had to show up at least occasionally.
Chief, they're not telling you the truth, that is not a part of it.
We didn't do that.
I, I fought on your behalf on that. Okay, I have a motion to second, discuss, any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, chief. And I would like to also add that, that at this point, it is entirely appropriate, I think, to say that the chief in the few days that he's been doing has done a tremendous job trying to bridge the gap, and then I'd like to also just, you know, talk, call out all the staff several in here now. Everyone has, has done a tremendous job of continuing to work at the city, Sarah and Alyssa, and I believe I saw Vicki over there, y'all, thank y'all for continuing, I knew you would, and there was no doubt in my mind, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that, that the staff has performed admirably, so.
Jeff, if we could also mention, anytime the city manager was on vacation or out of town, the chief was the go-to person in those situations.
Yeah, he's got, he's got a little bit of experience at that.
Okay. Chief's back here making motions, I'm not sure where it is, I think he may be fixing to, I'm not really sure, afraid to ask. Okay, any other, can we move into tab C now? Is there anything else, David, that I've forgotten?
The only other thing I would add to that is that I think that the city will begin to take action immediately to find somebody to provide management on a longer-term temporary basis as well as on a permanent basis. The appointment of the chief is a short-term temporary, and that we're looking for somebody to come in on a longer-term temporary basis very quickly and very soon, and that I think that they all will begin taking action towards that immediately.
Chief, and for the record, you've made that very clear, that he was not interested in doing this on a long-term basis, so just want to read that into the record, okay.
What's the definition of long-term?
A day, two days?
Okay, moving along, tab C, finance.
PowerPoint.
PowerPoint. Good afternoon.
No candy bars?
No candy bars this time. We are discussing the enterprise funds again, but kind of wanted to focus the goal more today, discuss priorities for the enterprise fund, but more particularly discuss the possibility of having a rate study done. So first, just to clarify, the city does have two enterprise funds. The first one is the water sewer fund, which is pretty self-explanatory, that is our water treatment plant and our water wastewater plants. It's also our distribution and collection, so the lines that distribute the clean water and the lines that collect the wastewater, that's all in that fund. And then next is our sanitation and solid waste fund, so that is our garbage and recycling pickup done by Waste Industries. We call that the sanitation, and then solid waste is the bulk pickup, yard waste pickup that the city of Villarica employees do. So like I said, wanted to discuss priorities for each component of the enterprise fund with the hope that maybe a rate study would address these things.
Can you wait just a second?
Sure.
See if they're gonna blow all the way through.
So obviously, one of the big things for the water fund right now is the potential for the rate increase for the water that we purchase. As we discussed two weeks ago, the executive director of the Carroll County Water Authority issued us a notice that he is going to propose an increase for the water that we purchase to start in 2018. The way it's proposed is over a five-year progression, that each year there would be about a twenty-five to thirty rate, thirty percent rate increase, but when you look at it from now till, till the end of that five-year period, it's about a hundred and sixty percent increase over five years. Also, he sent us a proposed new contract, which, one of the big points that we noticed was a required minimum of six hundred and fifty thousand gallons to purchase each day. On a good day, we don't purchase that much. Now, we, you know, this year's been an anomaly, so our current contract doesn't have a required minimum, but these are things to consider. All customers, one thing we'd like is to have all customers paying for the water that they use. The rate increase that we had in December kind of addressed that for our residential customers, we added a tier so that all water used is paid for, but in the past, that first thousand gallons is included in the base rate. Your base rate should cover your fixed costs, but then the variable cost should be paid for by the user. Like I said, that was, that was addressed for the residential customers, but it needs to be addressed for our other customers too. We've discussed this before, but just to remind everybody, the cost to provide a thousand gallons today, which is, again, we, we produce the majority, but we also purchase water, is five dollars and sixteen cents for a thousand gallons. The cost to provide a thousand gallons, if we were to purchase all of our water, would be six dollars and eighteen cents. All right, moving on to sewer. Again, these are just kind of priorities that I would hope the rate study would address, and I think it would. The first one being industrial pretreatment rates. I don't know how long it's been since those have been addressed, but I would hope the rate study would address those. An even bigger issue being the bond. This, the payment used to be split fifty-fifty between the general fund and the water sewer fund, but in 2017, we, we budgeted it seventy-thirty, trying to shift that over to the water sewer fund so that the customers are paying for it instead of your taxpayers from the general fund. And if you look there, I have the next five years of bond payments shown. Currently, it's one point seven million, but again, thirty percent is paid up by the general fund. But if you look to 2020, between 2019 and 2020, you see a four hundred and sixty thousand jump in just one year. So the rate study would have to address that. I went back and looked, and the bond, we'll be making payments until 2039, and overall, this was a thirty-nine million dollar bond. Next is sanitation. We do have the contract with Waste Industries, and from best I can tell, it's been a while since we looked at it, and it's been automatically renewing every April 1st since 2014. The contract itself allows for a CPIU, which is Consumer Price Index Urban, increase every year. In 2012, the last time I saw a memo with the price on it, it was nine dollars and forty-five cents we were paying per cart. As of today, it's ten dollars and ninety-six cents, expecting that to go up again on April 1st of this year. So we charge seventeen dollars per customer for their first cart, and we have the, we pay out this ten ninety-six, which is almost eleven dollars, but their seventeen dollars is also supposed to cover the bulk pickup. Which leads me to the bulk pickup, pickup, solid waste. This fund, so we do pay the Waste Industries for the sanitation, but the other expenses in that fund are related to our solid waste, yard waste, bulk pickup. So the cost for that, just in simple format, is personnel expenses, tipping fees at the landfill, fuel and maintenance costs, just some talking points for potential savings, which the rate study could address some of these things, you know. I guess if I, if, if you have feedback on any of these items, please let me know, but, you know, there's new technology now. There's apps out there where the customer could log on and tell us if they have pickup so that our teams aren't having to go through every street. Or using the technology where if our dri, either our drivers or Waste Industry drivers notify the team that there are bulk items to pick up, instead of, again, we're not having to go down every street. You know, there might be the option to talk to Waste Industries about that, them taking that over, or possibly a transfer station. Right now, when their trucks fill up, they have to drive, I believe, to Douglas County to dump. So that's fuel, that's time, but if there was, I don't know if there's a way to look into a trans, us maybe purchasing land or working with them to have a transfer station on this side closer to us so they don't have to go as far to dump, to save on fuel and time. So those were some of the priorities in the individual components of the fund balance that I would like the rate study, if we go that way to address, another item would be the financial component. So in my monthly financial meetings, I've been expressing that the, the cash balances and those enterprise funds are negative at this point. Basically, they're borrowing from other funds, they're part of the pooled cash account, there isn't a negative bank balance, just they owe other funds. But also the fund balance, which we've also discussed, again, fund balance, this should provide cushion for emergencies. Our, the city itself, we have a fund balance policy, and it requires three months of expenses. So if the annual expenses for your fund were six million, that means your monthly expenses are five hundred thousand, and so at a minimum, your fund balance should be three times that, so one point five million. But also, we, we need to be able to plan for future growth, future capital expansion, and those, and, and not even, you know, besides just growth, we need to be replacing, thinking about preventative maintenance for our, what we do have in place right now. So this, sorry. Our last audit that has been completed was for 2015, we're trying to, we're working on 2016. That's why these numbers are 2015, but the enterprise fund as of 12/31/2015 was one point four million, just shy of the three-month mark. But our solid waste fund was a negative one hundred and thirteen thousand, and so the three months' worth of expenses for that fund is two hundred and thirty-three thousand, so you can see the gap there. So that fund we really need to address. All right, next, I contacted the, remember their name, Environmental Finance Center at University of North Carolina. They received grants to help small cities do some financial analysis to see where they stand, you know, what the future holds. Basically, to, they do not do rate studies, that was the first question I asked, but they do give you information to come back and talk about the financial status of your water sewer area. So I gave them all of our customer, well, the consumption data that our customers use, I gave them our budget, our financial information, probably the similar information we would give for a rate study, and they, they did some projections for us to look towards the future. They did compare it to a, and this is just for illustration purposes, again, they haven't done a rate study, but they said, what if you raise your rates ten percent? Again, just for illustration purposes. The orange line is using our rates today, you can see the fund balance drops off significantly. And this starts in 2018, the numbers we've given them were the 2015 audit, so, you know, the projection is a loss in sixteen and seventeen for that fund as well, so you can see the drop-off. But even with just a ten percent increase, again, that's not after a rate study, that's just for illustration purposes, but you can see that, that brings us closer to breaking even.
Are you saying the new rates would be ten percent higher than they are now?
That was just for illustration purposes, just to give us kind of.
I mean, is that a one-time increase, or is that ten percent a year?
It was over five years.
Ten percent a year for five years?
Yes. So you can see the, the difference with that. This next one projects same illustration, what if we had a ten percent increase over a five-year period? The orange bars are with our current rates, that's our revenue with our current rates. The dark blue bars are the, if, if we were to raise ten percent a year, where you can see the growth there in the revenue. But more importantly, the red dotted line is our expense, and it's growing, kind of like a CPI sort of situation. We expect some growth in expense every year. You can see the big jump from 2019 to 2020 in those expenses because that's the growth in our bond payment, but you can see how our current rates don't get us there, you can see the, the gap there. But you can see with the slight increase every year, we eventually get caught up. And this is one more graph from them, similar to what we were just talking about. This is comparing what percentage of your revenue is your expense. So in order to break even, your revenue would have to be a hundred percent of your expenses. The orange line is where, what our current rates would bring in, so you can see the gap there. Our revenue is eighty to seventy percent of our expense, and that's why our fund balance shows it's going to decline so significantly. But with the slight increase, again, that was just for illustration purposes, but you can see it's bringing us up to break even and possibly even profitable, which you would want at some point, on some level, to be able to start building up that reserve. So for a rate study, these are also called cost of service studies, and some, just in general terms, what I would hope that we would get out of it is for them to help us determine if our rate structure is adequate to produce the appropriate revenue, cash, fund balance that we need. I would hope that they could determine the adequacy of the base fee, if it's covering our fixed costs. I think this is a big one, to assess the fairness of rates among different customer classes. As I mentioned, we did have that slight increase on residential rates in December, so it may not be fair to raise theirs as much as everybody else's. We, they would, basically, I talked to two firms, and what I heard from both of them is, you know, you're kind of addressing the fairness of it, the equality over your different customer types. You want each customer type to be paying their fair share, basically, because, you know. And I think it goes hand in hand with the next one, improve the methodology for rate structures. To understand the why, why does commercial pay a certain rate compared to industrial, residential? Because they use this, they use the system differently. So I think that would help us there. And then the last one is definitely a big one, determining the financial impact of current and future capital and debt. We do have the thirty-four million dollar bond that we're paying off, and you saw how it, how it's growing just in five years, and we have to pay that till 2039. But also, you know, we need to be looking at capital, future infrastructure, and these were some of the points I mentioned in my last presentation, and this is where I would hope to have some, I guess, feedback from y'all, and maybe, maybe, we don't know, maybe, maybe this, the rate study needs to address this as well. Are y'all hoping to increase the storage capacity, such as dredging the, I'll wait.
At least there's a few things in life that are dependable. Every time we're in a meeting, at least several trains.
Okay, so, looking forward, do we need to increase the, the storage capacity, such as dredging the lakes? Do we want to explore being a purchase-only system? If not, we can't, we will have to buy, you know, at this, at this rate, we do buy some of our water. Is that something we want to increase or continue as is? And this is me asking y'all, do we want, should we look at using Carroll County water and Douglas County, you know, kind of, when you're, when you're an investor, you don't put all, everything in one basket, you, you know, spread out your, your risk, I guess? Do we want to participate in reservoir with Carroll County Water Authority? And then the last two I didn't put question marks on, because these are things that need to be done. We do need to be aggressive in our water and sewer line replacement, y'all know that, we do have the CDVG coming this year, half a million dollars for that. We allocated lost money in the budget as well as water sewer funds for that even in 2017. But also our meters, you know, some cities have plans to replace their meters over a certain amount of time, because I've heard some people call that, those are cash registers. You know, that's your second-largest source of revenue, and if your meters aren't accurate, then our revenue isn't going to be accurate. So just looking to be proactive with that as well. Lastly, this, like I said, I did talk to two firms, and, you know, giving a price or a timeframe, it's all, it's all dependent on the variables, on the scope that we want. You know, how, how much do we need back from them? How much do y'all, do y'all want back from them? One of the firms I talked to, this was kind of how they laid out their, if you want to call, options or packages, but develop a new rate structure. I don't know if we would need a whole new rate structure, because. I don't know if we would need a whole new rate structure, because we already have tiered rates and things. I think there are things that need to be addressed, like everybody paying for the waters used and that sort of thing. Doing a base versus a volume study, as I mentioned before, our base rate should, our customers should, when they pay the base rate, it should be covering our fixed cost. And then, lastly, financial planning, looking towards the future. We've seen where our cash balances are and our fund balances are, and, you know, where we want our, where we want that to be, needed to be, but also the future capital plan. Timeframe, the two firms I talked to said they try to have, from the time they get the information from my department, they would hope to be sitting in front of you within four months at a max. I've read, I was, you know, doing research, and I was finding some of the bigger cities, it can take up to a year, so I was glad to hear them say three to four months. So that is all I have.
Question, please, ma'am.
Yes.
On priorities and solid waste, use of technology and trucks, as the driver can notify us when the items need to be picked up, do you have approximate cost of what those units, one of those units would cost?
I do not know, I would think it would, it's a tablet that they would have in the, in the truck with them.
And, and the next one is, is waste industry to handle the bulk pickup, do we know approximate cost of that one?
I do not know.
Okay.
Let me, I'm going to sort of answer the first question. When I was at mayor's conference, I was talking to some of the mayors from across the state, and a lot of cities have already put this in place, and most of us have ways on our phones now that are in traffic, and it's the same type system, and you would input, you know, everybody would download the Villarica app, and, and then if you had whatever, you would pull up, you know, your street, it automatically pulls up your address by GPS, and you would check off the items that you have for pickup, it would also tell you which items the city does not pick up. And then once you hit the send button, it would be logged into a database where the public works guys would then have that list, so rather than drive up and down every street in the city of Villarica, which is what they do now, they would merely look at that list and say, okay, I've got, on Harrell Road, I have two pickups I have to make, and this is what they are, which also tells them whether they need to take a small truck in a crew of one, or they need to take the grapple truck in a crew of six. So that technology's already out there, and I think we need to tap into that, that will be a cost savings, and that will also be a savings in manpower, so I think we need to definitely look into that.
And this contract's been in effect with Waste Industries for three years, would it benefit us to rebid that contract?
I think it's always benefited, I mean, you stay competitive if you bid it out.
Yeah.
I, do you know how many bids you got last time? I mean, are there-
I have no clue.
-are there options? Okay, we can look into it.
Jeff, just real quick, when you said about taking the grapple truck and a crew of six?
That was just a, an example.
All right, okay. I was going to say, wait a second, I thought that was the idea behind the big grapple thing.
Well, I was being overdramatic.
Okay, okay.
But thank you for pointing that out. Sarah, you did a tremendous job, you really did, and thank you for putting all your, the efforts into this.
And I want to say that this is the best powerpoint you've come up with yet.
Yes.
I appreciate it.
Great job.
Appreciate it, I got my own page in here. There's two questions.
I've just got a few questions, and the $650,000 gallon a day contract that we have with Carroll County, that's something we have to pay with this new rate coming in too, correct?
Yes, that's part of the, you know, it's all proposed, and it hasn't, as far as we knew that the last time, that had not been brought to his, to the Carroll County Water Authority Board yet.
And you certainly haven't agreed to that yet either.
That's, that was going to be my next point. So basically, we buy 650,000, we pay for 650,000 gallons of water a day whether we use it or not, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there's room for a little bit of a negotiation there. Some other questions, just little points I made. You answered one of those questions, you had in here that we pay 1096 per cart, that's how much we're charged from Waste Industries, we recover that by charging $17 per cart.
Yes, but that, that's the only fee we charge, so that 17 has to cover Waste Industries, and then the bulk pickup.
Correct, I just want to make sure that, that distinction was in there. Question that I asked Sarah, and we both pondered a little bit, and David, you may be able to help us with this, is, you know, in doing research on enterprise funds across the nation, it appears that there has to be a resolution by the governing body to designate some portion of the fund as an enterprise fund. So that being the case, you may not be able to, you may not know this at the time, but the question that I asked Sarah was, does, you know, solid waste pickup have to be a part of the enterprise fund? And here's, here's my thought there. An enterprise fund, as I understand it, basically is, you know, we're charged a service, and then we recover that service through a fee charged to the customer, in this case, the citizens. We don't have an enterprise fund for Recreation Department, we don't have an enterprise fund for the Police Department, so those are considered services that the city provides, in the Police Department's case, for safety, and in the Recreation Department for quality of life. My question is, is it even doable to say that door-to-door pickup of garbage is a service in that it keeps the city clean?
I think you've got the power, certainly got the power to make that determination. I don't know that that necessarily follows through with the spirit of setting up an enterprise fund, but yeah, it's possible.
Okay, just something to look at, and I'm not, you know, somebody's going to say, well, it's a shell game, and it's not, I'm just trying to, you know, quantify what an enterprise fund is as far as we're concerned, because we know how much we're charged per thousand gallons of water and how much we charge out, so, you know, in a perfect world, we would be recovering that. And in most worlds, I'll tell you, in doing my research across the nation, you know, most of the enterprise funds for water and sewer, we're not only making, we're not only breaking even, but making money. And so, so it appears to me that, you know, this council is certainly faced with some very tough decisions moving forward. If you, you know, when I saw the graphs, as Council McDougal, this, this was a great illustration of exactly where we're headed, and if you, and if you look at the graphs, you can see that, that in, by the year 2022, we will have exhausted all of our fund balance money, and that's not a good situation, so, you know, no one wants to use the word tax increase or rate increase, but I think that we need to seriously consider what our options are moving forward. You answered a question, that, your charts, column charts are based on 10% per year, so really, and that, that's, is that for garbage or is that for water?
That was water and sewer.
Okay.
And, you know, as I mentioned, that was just for illustration purposes, because I think we would need to assess kind of the fairness of each customer type.
Right, so, so in fact, that, that number's going to be way higher than that, because our fees are going to go up dramatically, potentially, if that's what the council-
Is that what you're referring to? Yes, that is not included in this, if that were to be the case, these numbers would look different. But at this point, since we do still produce a good part of our water, not every drop of water that would go out would have that, those large increases from Carroll County.
Right. And the reason Pete's not here for the crowd, Pete Zambronas would have normally been here, but we were in a meeting with Safe Dam, Georgia earlier today, and we found out that, that we also had inspections of our other two dams, so Pete asked if he could, could go to those meetings, and I told him, of course, you know, we need to get our, the two dams that we have, so that's why he's not here. So I'm, so we're answering a few questions on his part, and, you know, you mentioned the replacement of meters, and I remember not too many years ago, the city started installing the new Neptune meters, and there was another, another meter, as I recall, after that, but, you know, in talking with Pete, the life expectancy of these meters is about 20 years, and it's, Councilmen, y'all were here, so I think some of those meters were installed 20 years, so they're nearing their, their life expectancy, so. And again, that's a cash register, like you said, I like that analogy, if the meters aren't registered, then it could be the other way, I mean, they could be registering wrong for the customer also, so.
That happens in Atlanta a lot. It always hits WSB, doesn't it? I mean, these people have these thousand-dollar bills or something, it's crazy.
I got a question on this, you said that was water and sewer, is it 10% water increase and a 10% sewer increase?
Yes, just a 10% increase on those rates overall.
On both the water and the sewer rates?
Yes.
And one more question, moving forward on this, I know you contacted a couple of people, I love proactive, that's great. Do we need to, and this will be a council question, more than staff question, would we proceed, you know, with an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications from firms, and then subsequent to that, choose, send out an RFP for proposals, or?
I would like to do that.
Okay.
I think the rate study is necessary, we've talked about it before, I think it's probably what we have to do, if we want to do this right.
And I just want to make sure everybody understands the difference in the request for qualifications as opposed to a request for proposals. So the qualifications basically, you know, pre-qualifies everyone that's going to bid on it, and then you're only looking at qualified vendors.
Right, that's what I wanted to add.
Need to make a motion? Yes. I would think you would need to make a motion to authorize the staff to begin acquiring those RFQs.
All right, so moved.
Second.
A motion of second to direct staff to proceed with RFQs, and would you amend that to also include, well, I guess they'll bring back the qualified, okay, have a motion of second, discussion?
Well, if you're going to have, if you're going to have RFQs, then why would you not go ahead and-
You'd probably need to go ahead and get the proposal prepared anyway, and then you're going to send it out to the companies that you deem to be qualified, so there's no reason they couldn't start working out on the proposal, the request.
I will make that amendment.
Okay.
Second.
Second, again.
Multiple seconds. Discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Sarah.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Will, let you go real quick.
Whoa. Whoa.
Now comes Tuffy.
Uh-oh. Mine won't be like that.
Okay, if you want to go first, go first.
No, I just said that I qualified mine, saying that mine would not be tough like yours.
Well, really, the question is, if we're going to buy 650,000 gallons of water at 451 or whatever it is, and we can produce it for a lesser amount than that, then how are we going to determine what the charge is going to be to the individual tiered customers? Have we thought about that yet?
That would be part of the rate study.
It'll be part of the rate study. They're, like I said, it's also called a cost of service study, so they're going to come in and see what it costs for us to, to service residential customers, commercial, industrial, and then, then we'll see where the revenue needs to line up to cover that.
Okay. I think at some time, we're going to have to discuss, and I think we've talked about this previously, as to if we want to consider, if you live in city limits, you are charged a fee for garbage collection. Part of the problem, I think, we've run into, and we'll have to decide if that's something we want to do or not, is I believe we pick up garbage for people who aren't paying too, because the truck doesn't know who else out there is sticking something out, we have a problem with that, because we did.
If they choose not to go to, go with Waste Industries, are you, are you talking about the Waste Industries or our guys?
Wait, well, our guys don't either, but-
If they do not, if they choose not to go with Waste Industries, they are charged a $5 fee, which is supposed to cover the bulk pickup, so they can still participate in that.
Right, okay, for Waste Industries, going around picking up garbage cans, deciding who's paid that month and who hasn't paid that month.
When it's shut off, they should, the can should be picked up, and they shouldn't have a can if, if we haven't let them know that they are a customer, so unless someone has some rogue can.
Along that line, same line she's talking about, if you've got a customer that is not using Waste Industries, and they put a pile out on the street, we end up picking that up, the other people are subsidizing their pickup.
They are paying the $5, which is supposed-
They won't cover it. If they put a pile out every week, they ain't going to cover it.
Right, but we do, we have an online system that our staff communicates with Waste Industries, so if someone sets up service or cancels their service, we are letting them know.
Okay.
So that's how, the cans are delivered and then picked up if the customer has canceled.
When they do a rate study, will that be something that would be included as, what condition would we be in if all citizens that lived within city limits purchased garbage pickup?
At a minimum.
Yeah, yeah.
For dispay. Yeah, we can definitely, I would like to have the rate study include as many options as possible, so.
Okay, and the only other thing I'd like us to discuss publicly at some time, is how can we produce some, more of our own water and have a public discussion on that? I'm sure there's some citizens that have some great ideas, too, we've kicked it around sometimes, just individually. The, the state permits, they tell us how much we're allowed to provide. What makes the difference on that being raised? What do we have to do that has them be able to permit us to get more water if we had reservoirs or other places, or dredging, or whatever we can do to increase that amount so that we'd be less likely to buy from Carroll County, then we're beholden to whatever rates they, they give us, just like now, it's going to jump really big, and so it's going to cost us quite a bit more to buy from them. What if we could do some more of our own?
Right now, we can't even produce one and a half million a day, I think we're at about one and a quarter, aren't we?
One point, yeah, one point two.
So we're still-
One of the issues that comes about, and we've talked about this now four, five years, is the, the ability for the lakes that we have to recover after we've taken out 1.2 million gallons overnight. And there's, I think, there's about a seven-day window there, and the way I understand it, if we take out even just 1.1 and a half million gallons a day, the recovery time goes a little bit longer, and the streams or whatever that's above those three lakes cannot recover and bring that water into those three lakes in order to be able to continue that 1.5. That's the reason we are buying water from Carroll County, and it may have to, you know, be raised at that point in time, based on the number of gallons that we use individually and commercially.
That's a good point, and I think one of the things, one of the best things that I gleaned from this report was that we can, in fact, produce water cheaper than we can buy. And so with that, you know, moving forward, I think along with, with Councilman Best's comments, if dredging is something that we need to look at for capacity, then, you know, I think we look at that, and certainly, I would hope that that's part of our cost analysis study, is what our options are as far as increasing capacity in our storage facilities.
When we looked at dredging, three years ago, two or three years ago, it was going to be about $2 million to dredge, and the guy said, you guys sell a heck of a lot of water to get that $2 million back.
And that's part of our problem with our, with our enterprise funds being in this condition, is the, we don't have the extra money aside to deal with those kind of situations, or, or build on our infrastructure, what breaks down, so that's why we're doing this.
We are in somewhat of a pickle.
I think the other, the other issue as well, is if we continue, if we were to add on to the new, to the water plant, then there's some permit issues, because it's in the flood plain, that you can't add on the building structure, so that means you've got to build a new water plant. More of a pickle, more than just a pickle.
We need a cost analysis.
We need the rate study.
Right, we will, we will have that soon, we'll have better, better answers for our constituents soon. Any other business to bring before the council?
Yeah, I, that I just thought about, I should have done it, and I don't know if this is the, if this should be done in this meeting or in this access, but if you go back, if you go back to B2, far as the chief, well, he didn't tell me to ask y'all this now, but he might pay me later on, but will he get a salary adjustment for being interim city manager?
He's a good old boy, he's doing it just to help the city.
That thing got to do with this.
We don't expect him to last, you know, we say it's going to be short-term.
I think we're expected to be-
He should, if he's not for two days.
One at a time, y'all.
Just like when the city manager goes on vacation, we don't change your pay, right?
Which he would be tomorrow, anyway.
I think, I think our hope is that this is a very short time.
Our plan is to make it short.
Yeah, because we don't want to lose the chief either, and it's too much to handle all that for any, anything other than a very short period of time.
Can we, you know, for the chief, I'm going to say this, I didn't talk to the chief either, but I'm going to say this on his behalf, because I've seen similar situations in the past where folks-
Sorry, it's a little uncomfortable right here in front of you. Sorry about that.
I, I appreciate the opportunity. I'm honored that you're, you're thinking enough of me to do this and I really appreciate that part of it. I do ask that it not be long-term. I love what I do. I, I love my job and, and I, I have good staff to where I know I can pay attention to this and, and our department will run on its own because I have good people.
So it ain't no big deal.
What'd you say, man?
Nothing, nothing, no, nothing. I'll tell you later on.
Thank you.
I said, I knew I was going to get a note.
Yeah. As, as far as the money, I'm good. I mean, y'all, y'all treat me very good. I'm thrilled to death. But if this goes on for a month or something, then yeah, I would, I would appreciate it a little bit, so.
We can tell you, it's not going to go on that long. It's just like the city manager on vacation, like you've been fielding for before.
I'm not a problem at all, but I, like I said, I appreciate the opportunity and, and I will definitely be calling out Davidson and you guys a lot.
I want to say this on behalf of the chief, he would never, ever do this, but, you know, I asked, who's updating the city of Villarica website, I mean, the Facebook page and he has taken that upon himself. One of his employees is actually doing that. Is that correct? I hope you told me the truth.
That is correct.
Okay. You looked around somewhere.
I'm messing with Sarah and her PowerPoint.
And Councilman Marshman, I, I want you to know, if you want to make that in the form of a motion, that's, that's certainly your, your right to do so.
Shut down, but I will make it in the form of a motion.
Be specific.
How much you want to give?
Well, what do you get? Let's see.
Well, here's a suggestion to throw out. Why don't you wait and see how long it is going to last? And I think you can, depending upon how long that is, you can make the appropriate adjustment and then his salary or in the form of a bonus or one-time payment or something, depending upon how long it is.
He's done this before while the chief, while our city manager's been on vacation.
Yeah, he tells us that, but it's different.
Ms. Marshman, are you fine with that? Are you good with that, ma'am?
Yeah, I, I'd go with that.
Chief, I think you're good with that. So two years and that, that's it.
And that, then we'll revisit it.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So I'm going to have a motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.
You didn't ask for opposed.
Oh, you still mean?
Yeah. I need to talk to David.
Yeah.
I got Adam Smith Consulting calling about the CDVG project, one of those persons. G.com today, they have a CDV, bring a bunch of people from the district next Thursday.
Is everything, all the meetings next weekend?
Well, G.com's next Thursday, but Adam Smith Consulting called today yesterday and they want to know where the CDVG project is. I mean, I got stuff like that going on. That's why we need somebody. I don't know. I mean, I've never been in the meetings. David was.
Set up a meeting with me and you and the chief and Sarah tomorrow.
Now, I know the CDVG, the surveys are not at 100% yet and they have to be because there's four residents out there that wants to do the survey. Well, I touched.
Hey, Sarah, you're being a volunteer for stuff.
I touched base with him yesterday. It'll take a few days. Even though he keeps it signed. It's really a lot.
Will you set up a meeting tomorrow with us, just the four of us, with the chief and Sarah?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
That's our policy.
Because I've got a bunch of stuff.
You need 12 months.
Yeah, I can. Because I've got a bunch of stuff I need to bring up to the, I'm making it happen. Nine o'clock works.
So she's asking again, her bill spiked up and she got it fixed, but I've said, we already had an adjustment within 12 months, so we can't do it. So she talked to Pete, she talked to chief, she wasn't very happy when she hung up with chief, so I didn't know if she'd be appealing to you as well, but I just wanted to give you the information. We did it in September and we say you can only have it once within, you can have, we adjusted two months and it added up to $400. You can only have two months and it's 12 months.
Make sure she's going to be there.
Two times in 12 months, but that, that is two times.
She calls, she calls, asking, are you the one handling this now?
Yeah, you can tell her bill spiked from $24 to $200, $300. So we've taken off 400. She had another spike and I think she had it fixed, but I can't, right? I can't keep adjusting it.
Well.
She, she called me and I told her.
Yeah. They wanted to, you know, the thought was it was presumptive because they weren't about what to do with it now, but we invited them, you know, bring it in before they went into executive session or even afterwards and it's only adjourned. Probably next week, something about hour. See what they want.